Everyone, we're going to go ahead and get started with our request for cancellation of taxes meeting. Today's date is August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. The time is eleven a.m. In attendance are Commissioners Eberlein and Matarri, and on the telephone is Commissioner Duncan. And I'm going to call this meeting to order. Are there any changes to the agenda? Okay, I'm going to move that we reschedule items one, two, and four through thirty-eight, because basically, it really was a classification error where we are canceling taxes today and not amending value. So without objection, I'd like to move these to a BOE meeting that we'll schedule next week, because we are dealing with value for those items and not taxes. Commissioner Duncan?
All right, so just, we're now handling all of the homeowners exemptions and valuation changes and not cancellation of taxes. Is that what I'm understanding?
That those know that item three, we will, we will do today, which is a casualty, and that the other items, we will move to a BOE. And I have spoken with the assessor's office about this, so that make sure that this doesn't happen again.
Okay, so the, all the exemptions for the House bill is what I was talking about, the homeowner's exemption. That's fine.
Yeah, because those are a value amendment and not a tax rebate or cancellation.
Well, they're, they're exemptions, so that's really not even a valuation or anything. It's just a distinction with no difference. But yeah, that's fine.
Well, we have, we have Dave on the line. So, I mean, Dave, did you want to chime in a little bit on that?
Certainly. So exemptions are also, appeals or exemption decisions are also handled by the Board of Equalization. So it would be appropriate, it would be appropriate to move those to the, to the next BOE meeting, presumably next week.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Hi.
All right, so introductions, we have Gray, well, we have Terry Johnson and Leanna Kaiser from the B O C C office, and Gray Parnell, who will be representing. Are you an owner in the Greystoke Capital Alpine LLC?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so next will be the swearing in of participants in attendance. So I'll have the clerk go ahead and.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that the evidence you shall give in the issue pending before the Board of County Commissioners shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
Yes.
Okay, public comment. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Hearing none. Okay, we will go to our one and only item, which is number three. It's in a request for adjustment casualty loss for AIN one, four, two, seven, two, zero, Greystoke Capital Alpine LLC. These are White Pine Apartments. And Mr. Parnell, I'll give you a few minutes to explain the situation and what happened to your property.
Good morning, Board. Thank you for your time today. As Mr. Bruce stated, my name's Gray Parnell. I'm majority owner of the Greystoke Capital Alpine LLC, which is the owner of that White Pine Apartments. These are up on West Mary Avenue, right behind Lowe's, not too far from Lowe's. It used to be called Alpine Apartments, and then was rebranded to White Pine Apartments, I believe, this last year. We acquired the community in two thousand twenty-two, and May, or spring of two thousand twenty-three, we had a resident that moved out of the community, and our maintenance team went in to complete the turn, as a standard for our business, and get the reunit rent ready, and noticed a really large bowing of the wall. At what point, you know, you can't move somebody in if there's evidence of water intrusion to that degree. So we then opened up the wall and noticed some significant dry rot, that the joists had rotted out, that the brick on the inside was very brittle and degrading, deteriorating quickly. And we also noticed there was no vapor barrier installed. And so because of the framing was rotted out, we then pursued to get permits for this particular unit. And I guess it was a couple of units, it was a stack. And so we hosted George Daley, the city inspector, out to the community. And he expressed some serious concern around the structural integrity of the structures. And at one point, it was thought that the building would be condemned, or that we would have to completely tear down the communities, and basically, like, start, start with raw dirt and build up. He, he said, we're not allowed to move anybody else into the communities till we fix these structural issues. And so from that point on, we did, you know, we had some extent of what was going on, but we, it took us a month or two to really completely explore and understand the, the extent of the damage. We then, because it was structural, we did have to engage an engineer during kind of the tail end of COVID. It was very difficult to find engineers, architects, and people that we could leverage to help us here. But we did find an engineer, we did find an architect. You know, we, we, we knew that to do any of this work, we would have to completely vacate the property. And that was said as much from, from George. And so we sent out a notice of vacate to residents, explaining that the building was unsafe for habitable conditions in fall of two thousand twenty-three. We put January fifteenth as the, they had to be out by January fifteenth. Pretty much everybody was vacated at the community at that time, except for two, two folks that were legally residing at the property. And unfortunately, it was very, very difficult sometimes to remove, you know, trespassers or, you know, people living there without permission. And so we didn't, the last resident didn't end up leaving till March of two thousand twenty-three. We then had a completely vacant community and completed about a two-point-one million dollar structural rehab, so had to do all new framing, I mean, a bunch, bunch of new components to get it safe for residents. The plans did have to go through the proper channels to get approved. And we had our first move-in in August of two thousand twenty-four, and it recently hit stabilization in April of this year, of two thousand twenty-five. So there's about, about an eight-month period where it was a completely vacant property. This wasn't, you know, just a simple apartment renovation. It was required to do a substantial rehab. You know, it wasn't, this problem wasn't noticed upon the purchase, because you would have had to do destructive testing to understand the issue, which was later confirmed. And so, lost a lot of nights of sleep over this, because there is a loan on the community. Definitely feel for a lot of residents, because, you know, it is, it was, it's a very affordable, you know, relatively speaking. And so it was a very, very stressful situation to try and get, get, you know, help the residents relocate and do the work that's needed for the community. Thank you.
Are there any questions?
No.
Commissioner Duncan, do you have questions?
Not at this time.
Okay, I have a couple of questions for you. This cancellation of taxes has to do with the tax year two thousand twenty-four, when the, when you were out last year, you couldn't collect rents, basically. Okay. And what about the assessment for this year? Is that?
Yeah, so we, we were a little confused of how, like, because of the issue bordered both tax years, we weren't, we, our team wasn't exactly sure how the correct process. We had called the assessor's office, which then referred us over to Leanna. And, and I believe, I think, like, the adjustment, the potential adjustment wouldn't happen until November of this year.
Okay. The other question I have is, and this really gets into, you know, was this, and this is something the board will have to kind of decide, too. Was this an actual property loss, or was this a result of construction and not staying on top of the maintenance or something like that? Like, you know, how long was the wall bowing? Was it, was, did it, was it caused by a storm? You know, can you articulate?
Yeah, thank you for the question. So we didn't notice any issues with the community. We, when we went to purchase it, we get a very in-depth property condition assessment by a certified engineer. We have multiple due diligence teams on site to assess the structural integrity. Nothing was noticed at that time when we bought it. It was only when the resident had moved out, and we were able to turn the unit. Initially, Commissioner, we thought it was only limited to a stack, just those, you know, that's a three-story stack. And so at first, we were like, no problem, we'll get the stack completed. But it was later told to us by George Daley that both buildings, all, all around, would need to be addressed. Without actually removing walls upon acquisition, there would have been no way to see whether there was no vapor barrier, or that there was dry rot. You would have had to taken out walls to be able to see it. And we always try and do our very best to address deferred maintenance and asset preservation. This was definitely not part of the business plan. We had no, no way to conduct due diligence without destructive testing.
Yeah. Because that is one of the challenges for the board, is that if we're going to look at canceling taxes, it should be based upon an event. And what it sounds like is there may have been an event at that particular unit, but that ended up leading to discoveries of other issues, and then a separate building, which really doesn't have anything to do with the event itself. It's more of a, you know, the, the way it was constructed was the issue, and that led to the problems. Thoughts from the board on that? Because this is one of the issues that is before us, that it's a casualty event that has to occur in order to cancel taxes, because you can't live in it. For example, your home burns. You can't live in your home for eight months until it's fixed.
Yeah.
That's an event why we would reduce the taxes and cancel the dollar amount.
If I may just add, Commissioner, you know, we, we, if, if it was up to us, we would have just gotten the stack of units repaired and completed, and, and go through the permit process. But it was only a requirement of the city and a threat of condemnation that resulted in us having to do the work.
Yeah.
How many, how many units do you have?
Sixty units, two buildings, and stacks of three units, so three stories. I mean, it's, it's always hard as an owner, especially if a loan and fiduciary duty to the stakeholders, to not be generating any revenue, to be, having to put in the capital to get it fixed, to go through the process. You know, we still had to pay our loan, you know, every month. That was still an obligation. And so, you know, ideally, you know, it would have been great just to repair the three units, but it was, this was a requirement saying that you're not going to get CFOs until you do this work.
Was the work done with using a building contractor and, and having people come out to check your work?
Absolutely. Yeah, so.
I mean, I mean, in the beginning over there, with the start of that building.
Yes. Yeah, it was all, these were all local contractors.
He's referring to initial construction.
Yes.
Was, was, did the city approve occupancy without those, I guess, the vapor wrap or other things?
That's correct. When we acquired the community, there were current certificates of occupancy, and the community was a hundred percent occupied.
So much for building inspections from, from government.
Well, and they're adding more after the fact.
That, that should have never happened. And you can't sue the government.
Commissioner Duncan, thoughts on that?
Yeah, what year were, was the community constructed?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Duncan. It was, I believe it was nineteen eighty-four. So this is a eighties vintage community.
Okay. And then regarding the event, I would agree that this is really difficult to pinpoint to a specific event. And your taxes were paid for two thousand twenty-four, correct?
Yes, I believe so.
Yeah. So I, I think in this point, it's going to be difficult to follow the law in either prong that we have to, that we have available to us as the board. And one would be the event. So this was an event, this was something that occurred over time. And then number two, since you've paid your taxes, it's going to be a lot more difficult to prove hardship, even though, you know, we understand very much the circumstances to which you had no income, and you had all these repairs that created, you know, financial loss. But I, I'm not sure that state statute would allow us to move on this particular one. But that's just my initial thoughts.
Commissioner Eberlein?
While I'm of a different mindset, I do think that there's, we should take into account the loss that's there. And I don't think you can probably go back in time on, you can't go back on, what, nineteen eighty-four?
Correct.
So probably the closest you could get to it is, what, twenty-four taxes?
Yeah, what we're looking at is, you know, prospectively, reducing the taxes from, I believe, forty-eight thousand, six hundred forty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents, down to twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred sixty-three dollars and twenty-seven cents, which is a twenty thousand, seven hundred ninety-one dollar reduction in taxes. So then the question becomes, you know, should it be for the unit in question where the, the wall was bowing? And, you know, that's where the, the problem unit probably was? Or should it include the second building as well, which is really related to the inspector, and not so much a casualty, you know, property casualty event, which was after the fact?
So did you have an inspection?
Commissioners, may I interject briefly?
Yes, sorry.
So I just want to point out that the casualty loss provision in sixty-three, seven-eleven, Idaho Code sixty-three dash seven-eleven, is pretty specific that there must be an event causing damage, which occurs after the fourth Monday of June, or which losses can't be determined until after that. I think the reason that is there is because if there's a situation like we're, we're talking about now, the assessment will reflect the reduction in value. So if there's an event, or some sort of condition, let's say, I don't want to use the word event, if there's a condition that causes a commercial property to lose rental income, and if that's not reflected in the assessment, then the BOE is the vehicle that the owner uses to appeal the assessment because of the reduction in value, presumably because the property can't be used in its normal way. So if we're talking about a condition, rather than an event, like a fire, like Commissioner Matarri suggested, that would result in a loss of value to the property, then that should be handled with the assessment and/or an appeal to the BOE. If that didn't happen, I'm not sure there's a way for the board to provide relief, considering there's no single event like a fire. So that, that's all I had.
Okay. So then what you're saying is, for example, if the assessment remained the same, and there was no appeal of the assessment, then the mechanism is not in place for the board to adjust the taxes?
Right. If there's not a casualty event, which couldn't be captured by the assessment, and I think that's why this language here about the fourth Monday of June, the casualty has to occur after the fourth Monday of June, presumably a casualty event will be captured by an assessment. The property burns down in, in, let's say, March, well, the assessment will reflect that. But if it happens after that, the assessment can't reflect that. So it's, it's no different with this situation. If there was a condition that caused the property to lose its commercial value, then that should have been encapsulated in the assessment, or if it wasn't, through an appeal to the BOE.
Just, Commissioner Eberlein, did you?
Bruce, I think you and I are saying the same things.
Okay. Commissioner Eberlein, you were saying something?
Continue.
No, okay. Leanna?
Leanna Kaiser, for the record, excuse me. The assessment for two thousand twenty-five has been adjusted. This was brought forward after the two thousand twenty-four assessment, after the two thousand twenty-four appeal period. This is a, just a request for cancellation of taxes for the two thousand twenty-four tax period. But the two thousand twenty-five assessment has been adjusted.
Okay.
There wouldn't have been an appeal for the two thousand twenty-five, because they already, they did adjust it. The assessor's office did adjust it for two thousand twenty-five, twenty-four at this point, because two thousand twenty-five taxes should be right.
Okay. Dave, did you catch that? So there was an assessment adjustment?
Not really, no.
There, there was an assessment adjustment for two thousand twenty-five to reflect the fact that these, these apartments could not capture rents. But it's two thousand twenty-four
That we're looking at.
That we're looking at.
Yes.
And that's what the taxes are that we're looking at canceling.
Yes.
So then I think the board has to determine whether or not there was a casualty event that occurred after the fourth Monday of June. And if there was, then the board could offer relief.
Yes. And so the question is, what, what constitutes a casualty event? And I couldn't find a definition of that anywhere.
Yeah, unfortunately, there isn't one. But I, I think your example is historically, in the sense that the way the board typically rules on this, and I think the kind of plain meaning of the word casualty, and it does say event, a casualty event, suggests something like a fire, you know, wind damage, a tree falls on the, on a structure. That, that's the kind of stuff the board has considered in the past as a casualty event.
Just one second. Thoughts on that, Commissioner Eberlein?
Can that apply in this case with faulty construction?
I don't know if faulty construction would constitute, like, it would fall under the same category as, like, wind damage, flooding, fire. That's the problem, is that it, it, it was built in such a way that not only was it approved, but it led to a problem at the property that, when identified by the same entity that approved it, said, now you got to change it again. Which, you know, I see that as definitely an issue. I just don't know if that falls under the purview of this statute and why we're here today.
So Dave, what, what's your thought?
Yeah, Commissioner, in my experience, faulty construction is not the same as a casualty event. I don't believe insurance, insurance companies, for example, when you have a casualty policy, things like, unless there's a specific provision in the insurance policy, things like defective construction is not considered a casualty event. And what we're supposed to do is take the plain meaning of words and statutes, just the regular dictionary definition meaning when it's not defined specifically. So I think most of us understand the word casualty to mean an event similar to a fire or wind damage, things like that, that would not cover faulty construction.
Can I chime in here?
Yes, of course.
So what it sounds like, and I think we've seen some of this go through BOE before, is that it should have been addressed in June of twenty-three, or minimum January of twenty-four, where the assessor could have made those determinations that it was not, the structure was not usable. So to me, it sounds like it just, they just didn't get the information to the assessor on time. And, you know, for instance, when they got their June of twenty-four assessment notice, then that would have been the proper time to file an appeal, or to let the assessor know that their units are not livable. So that's just the way I'm kind of looking at the different statutes that we're dealing with right now.
Yeah. Yeah. Did you have something you wanted to say, Mr. Parnell?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Just a couple of things I would add. You know, we, we see the time of event as the time that we were given an order by the city inspector, saying that we're not able to lease any more units, that we need to work towards a solution, an approved solution by the city to be in compliance, to make sure that we're providing a safe home for our residents. We did look to go through the standard casualty loss insurance. We were advised that if they came out to the property, it would result in a cancellation of insurance, and there, we run a significant risk of the property being uninsurable in the future. As, as you go through any type of commercial insurance these days, they always ask when you file your application for that. In addition, because it was going to a notice, we had to notice to vacate everybody, the lender required us change to a builder's risk policy from a property policy. I can definitely appreciate that the difficulty, you know, I know, I recognize this is not like a normal casualty event, like a fire or flood. But we did try, we did go through the steps that the city required us. We did what was right for the community and for the residents. And today, those communities are back full. We're not asking, or, you know, trying to argue that we shouldn't pay, be paying taxes going forward. We totally recognize that as stakeholders in the community, but just asking for consideration for the time that we were completely vacant because of these structural issues.
No. You know, I, I think the, the key question is, is this an event? And, you know, what I'm hearing from the applicant is, the event was the inspector. And that's not really the traditional, that, that doesn't happen for this situation. An event is a weather-related event, an earthquake, something that happens by chance. I guess you could make the argument, the inspector coming by was by chance, but the inspector was going to come by because of this other event that occurred at one unit. And, and so I find it hard for us to fit this situation into the, the square that the statute allows us to operate under. I certainly feel for your situation, but I can't, I can't. I, I certainly feel for your situation, but I can't, I can't argue that this was a casualty event, in essence, which is the defining term for us to be able to cancel taxes.
Yeah, no, I, I can, I can understand the difficulty for interpreting the definition. Um, you know, it's, it was hard for us to define a single minute or day of this event because we had to do investigative work to understand what the event, what event was occurring, what was impacting the community and whether it was truly structural or not.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, look, I'm not, I'm not an engineer, I'm not an architect. You know, I, I did my best to find the pieces as soon as possible to piece together a plan of action, but there was a real risk of 60 units being taken offline in the Quarterlane community. And I wasn't going to let these things be demolished or condemned and I wanted to find a solution and went through the process to do so.
Uh, Commissioner Everline and Duncan, your thoughts on this?
Does mold come into it?
Does, does mold come in as a, a casualty event?
And was there mold?
Yes, there was mold.
Are you, you wanna ask Dave that question?
Yes.
Dave, uh, we have a question, uh, would mold constitute a casualty event, do you think? You there, Dave? Uh, I would suspect that mold is the result of the event and less so the event. Commissioner Duncan? Do we lose our telephone?
There was an email that came through.
Oh, we were, yeah, we were having some problems. I wonder if we shouldn't just take a, a short recess?
I can hear them on the line, online. Leslie? Okay, so we can't, we can't, okay, can't hear you in the room. Um, I'm gonna try and hang up. There's an email that came out from my T, I guess. So I'm gonna try and hang up. Can you guys, you and Dave?
Sorry. Oh, you're fine, no worries.
Okay.
Incidentally, the National Association of Building Contractors created a form that says, any mold is your problem, it's not ours, period. So they, they're exempt.
Yeah. Uh, the whole thing stinks.
Conference.
Why, yes.
Are you back, Leslie?
Please, your. Thank you. There are two participants in the conference. Please announce yourself.
Sure.
Leslie.
All right, Leslie, did you have some thoughts? I know we lost you for a little bit. If you could just kinda start over on the, uh, the casualty event.
Uh, sure, so there's, um, three ways to go about this. Hardship, but again, the taxes were paid. The event, which I don't believe this is an event, it's an ongoing situation. And then, uh, the assessment through the assessor's office, which has an appeal period to BOE. Unfortunately, the best place to handle it was BOE, but they didn't get the information to the assessor's office in the right amount of time and didn't file an appeal for their assessment in 2024. So I don't see a way for, um, this board to, to make that determination. Um, the only thing would be going back to that hardship. Um, but again, you know, having, how, how did they prove the hardship if they did go through the process, um, to, to get this $20,000 reduction? So that's just kinda where, where I'm at. Which I, I feel, I'm, trust me, I, I wish they would have been able to get this changed in 2024 because, you know, as a, a small, tiny business owner, um, being not able to operate your business for eight months and then incur the $2 million that is required for the rehab is, you know, can be devastating. So I absolutely feel for this situation. I'm just not sure legally how we can proceed unless it is hardship, which is kind of an arduous process.
Mr. Purnell, closing thoughts?
Thank you, Commissioner Leslie, uh, very valid points. I, I would say that we can definitely prove hardship. We do have financial statements that show the loss. We do have a tax return that does show the significant loss. Um, we were, we were very close to going into foreclosure. Uh, that, that was definitely a difficult part. We, we did face a significant financial burden here and that can be evidenced and proven within the financials. I can definitely understand the point about, you know, was this a one-time, was it a single event or was it an ongoing event? As well as the argument around, hey, we, we missed the deadline. I think the confusion on our team was because the work and the issue crossed both ears, how that was handled, um, you know, may, may have not been to, to the best, uh, 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 a best plan, uh, in accordance with, with what the, the county would like to see. Um, but we did face hardship here, you know, we, we are very proud owners of White Pine and to be in the Quarterlane community. And, uh, you know, we're definitely excited to continue to operate.
Commissioner Everline?
Well, if we're gonna follow state statute, we're kinda, we're hamstrung.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, with that said, I completely sympathize with the situation and what you're saying, but I can't link it to an event that's a property event, a casualty event. I don't know why this phone is doing this. But either way, go ahead.
I, I suppose that they could, you know, file a hardship application and as they go through that process and they'd be able to determine on their own if they think that it's gonna rise to that level as they, you know, go through their finances and provide all that. And then we'll just have to make a determination. Um, typically hardships we view when they're going to lose a home. So I don't know, maybe Dave has to, uh, chime in here that is, is the hardship process available for a commercial entity?
Well, but.
Yeah, I, I believe it probably is. It, it is discretionary. The statute says undue hardship and that's discretionary on the board's part. I, I do not believe it's limited to just residential alone. Um, so if the board wants to engage in that process, it's free to.
Well, then we would just have to agree upon what constitutes the event. And if the event is a construction issue that leads to a city official, uh, laying down terms that are, uh, you know, that cause this, uh, undue hardship event, then it would be worth going that route. So is that something that, uh, I, I guess this board could look at and say that that's a reasonable event that we could look at that created an undue hardship?
No, I don't think we have to worry about the event at all. I think just the fact that this, um, building was not, uh, could not be occupied for a certain amount of time, I think that's enough to bring us the hardship financial information to say, look at our bank account, look at how much we had to spend and the fact that they almost went into foreclosure. Those are all the things that we can attribute to undue hardship. I don't think we have to put it to an event. I think that just the fact that, um, they experienced, uh, an inability to do business because of structural damage, that we can look at the finance part of it. Because when we talk about a hardship for, um, just homeowners, they, um, can just prove hardship because of finances, not because there's any damage to the home or any loss, um, of use of the home. Does that make sense?
Uh, it does. So then in that situation, we would recommend, assuming the board agrees, that you reapply for hardship and be prepared to provide your financials detailing that hardship, like how you characterized it, Mr. Purnell?
Yes, sir.
Dave, thoughts?
Yeah, I, I agree with, uh, the process Commissioner Duncan laid out. If, uh, if the board determines that there's an undue financial hardship based on, you know, re- review of the business's records, then it's within the discretion for the board to cancel the tax.
Okay, so with that said, uh, I would propose that we make a motion denying it based upon a casual, the lack of a casualty event, uh, but that you can come back with a hardship to apply for that.
I agree.
All right, so I move that we deny the request for adjustment uh, for casualty loss for AIN 142720 Greystoke Capital Alpine LLC, White Pine Apartments, uh, due to the fact that it does not meet the casualty event definition per statute. Just need a second. All right.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Matarri?
Aye. So you understand, Mr. Purnell, what the next steps are?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, uh, that concludes our business items public comment. Hearing none, 11:40, meeting adjourned. Thank you.